Tuesday, November the 19th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Please stand for the prayer by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the pledge by Councilman George.
We're here to honor and give you honor and we give you praise. Lord, as the Christmas season is upon us, Lord, we remind you of that wonderful gift you've given us, Father, your Son, Jesus Christ, who took on the sins of this world, died on the cross, Father, for our sins, Lord. And we thank you for that, God. We ask tonight for unity in this room, Lord, with our city council, our staff, Lord. We ask for peace and grace for our citizens, Lord, through this season and throughout the next year. We pray all this in the Son of Jesus Christ, Holy Name. Amen.
Please draw me for the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman George, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Ms. Yancey, do we have any changes? No changes. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Gullott?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Paula Yancey.
City offices will be closed Monday, December 25th, and Tuesday, December 26th, in the observance of the Christmas holiday. The city offices will also be closed Monday, January 1st, in the service of the new Capitol.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and tonight we have two. Our first is the certificate recognizing the coaches and players of the Gochee Youth Football Team Super Bowl Champions. First, I would like to ask the team coach, Lee Booth and Eric Minor, if you and your team can come to the front, so we can recognize you. This is the certificate of recognition, whereas the city of Gochee's Youth Football Super Bowl was held November the 18th, 2023, whereas the head coach of the Gochee Saints is Lee Booth and Eric Minor as assistant coach. And whereas the players were Trey Baldwin, Alazza Bryant, Kamarian Holmes, Kyrie Hurst, Jermell Matthews Jr., Mason Minor, Chancellor North, and Amara... Amari Pasely?
Paisley.
Paisley. Whereas the Gochee Saints won the 7-8 Football Super Bowl Championship, and now therefore we, K.C. Vaughn Mayor and the council members of the city of Gochee, Mississippi, do hereby recognize the Gochee Saints as the 7-8 Football Super Bowl Champions. And testimony whereof, I hereby affix the seal of the city of Gochee this the 19th day of December, 2023, Mayor K.C. Vaughn. Congratulations. Congratulations. And the council, are we all standing in the middle? You know, I just want to say thank you to the coaches for volunteering, because it's hard recruiting, and thank Chastity and her staff for all their hard work. To recruit volunteers here for our youth seems to be a challenge, so I encourage all of you or your church or your business, if you want to volunteer, we have volunteer positions available, and our youth really need great mentors, so they're looking. But these gentlemen stepped up to the plate, took time out of their busy schedules to help these youth, and to watch them play, every year the Super Bowl rotates in the city. This year, the city of Ocean Springs was the host city for the big event, and to watch them play their hearts out and win was just a great day in Ocean Springs supporting the Gators. So I look forward to watching y'all next year, and the council, we appreciate all y'all's hard work. Congratulations. Church Joshua Reese, Maurice Lowry, and Urban Gullott, and your 9-10 football team. City of Gochee Certificate of Recognition, whereas the city of Gochee's Youth Football Super Bowl was held November the 18th, 2023, and whereas the head coach of the Gochee Gators, Joshua Reese, with Maurice Lowry and Urban Gullott as the assistant coaches, and whereas the players were Carter Adams, John Cubian, Jackson Cross, Kadarian Davis, Darian Davis, Jayden Dorsey, Timothy Fairley, Eden Gullott, Zamarion Graffrey, Kyler Hayes, Jason Jewels Hill, Maurice Lowry Jr., Aubrey McLendon Jr., Braylon Newberry, Christopher Pittkins, Kayden Reese, Ramon Wallace, Jamison Washington, Jackson Williams, Kevin Williams, Emery Worsham, Kerry Young Jr. And whereas the Gochee Gators won the 9-10 Football Super Bowl Championship, and now therefore we, K.C. Vaughn, and the council members of the city of Gochee, Mississippi, do hereby recognize the Gochee Gators as the 9-10 Super Bowl Championships. And testimony whereof, I hereby affix the seal of the city of Gochee the 19th day of December, 2023, Mayor K.C. Vaughn. Congratulations. Good job, boys, and y'all continue to have a good holiday and enjoy, and thank y'all for representing. To watch this team that day in Ocean Springs, it was a little more intense, but we had a victory, and you would have thought you were at a professional pro football game watching the young youth. And I have to say, kudos to all the parents. There was some concern before the ballgame started about behavior with adults. I said, I don't think we're going to have any problem. And kudos to the parents for not using foul language, not aggressing with each other. And I just want to say thank you for allowing your children to play here in Gochee, and we look forward to next year. And I encourage you once again, on behalf of Chastity and her staff that does a fine job, please help recruit volunteerism. If we want to have recreation for our youth and keep them out of trouble, we have to have volunteers, we have to have people invest in our youth, or else we won't be able to have recreation. They're our future leaders, and Mayor Vaughn and the council, we support y'all 100%. We're only a phone call or a message away from your parents or you if you need us. That brings us to presentation agenda item number two, recognizing the retirement of Deborah Holmes, utility billing clerk. Come on, Ms. Debbie. And she's been bribed and bribed and bribed to not leave, but at some point you got to go live life to the fullest after you've done a long career like she's been dedicated to Gochee.
I think most of the people in this room probably know Debbie or have talked to Debbie on the phone over her 37 years.
Hold on one second, Ramona, let's let them get out. We're going to hold on one second while our youth leave, so they don't distract Debbie's recognition on her special day.
So in honor of Deb's 37 years here with the city, we have a little plaque that we have made for, and I'm just going to read what we have on it. Thank you for your exceptional work and dedication throughout your 37 years of service. You have made a difference in the lives of so many. Debbie Holmes, as you move into the next amazing chapter of your life, know that you will be missed, know that our very best wishes and thoughts go with you, and know that we will never forget your professional expertise, mentorship, and your friendship. Our best wishes go with you.
I'll ask that Ms. Yancey and Ramona and any of the utility department or city staff that want to get in our photo with Debbie, if y'all please come forward so we can get a photo recognizing her. Ms. Van, you started out working with Debbie many years ago. Come on. Come on, Babs, don't make me call y'all out. Come on, Tris, come on, Tris. I mean, do y'all want me to call your names, or y'all going to come? Uh-uh, don't run out the back door, ma'am. Kim, you want to... No, it's time, Kim says I saw Kim come. Come on, Chief Bevers. Come on, Chief Latch, you've been here getting on those years too, come on. Josh, I see, he's over there. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. As you can see, it's like family. When one leaves, it's not an easy task. That brings us to our business agenda. And Debbie, we know you're not going far, so you're only a phone call away, we can still get you. Approval of a memorandum of agreement, MOU, between the city of Gochee and Jackson County for provisions of the recreation services by city manager Ms. Yancey.
Yes, Mayor, since the 1990s, each city has had an interlocal agreement with Jackson County. Basically, the basis of it was for the cities to make pay now. The county owned parks within their area, and in exchange, the county would give certain amounts of money to the city. This is the county basically cleaning up those agreements and bringing them more up today. You've always gotten anywhere from $120,000, $130,000, sometimes $140,000. This gives you $150,000 sets for anything over maintenance of the parks that the county will do. So it's just basically cleaning up and interlocal agreements that you've had for a long time.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Gochee and Jackson County for the provisions of recreation services?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gullott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Councilman Gullott?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, approval of the supplemental agreement number four for the Martin Bluff Roadway Improvements Project by our city manager, Ms. Yancey.
Yes, Mayor, this is supplemental agreement number four. Basically, this increases the contract amount by $1,221,986.10, add six to five additional working days to the contract. Basically, what this is, is the original contract contemplated 18 inches of excavation. The additional funding and additional traffic control is to excavate anything below the 18 inches, take out the bad dirt and bring in good dirt if that arises. It's been approved by M.D. It's been signed off by the surety, it's been signed off by the contractor, so do the last stop.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name. You have three minutes. Councilman College will hold up number one, and when he does, you will, then at three minutes, we will tell you to please have your seat. Go ahead. He's ready, he already started waiting on you.
Anthony Snow, 2205 Highland Drive. My only question, it was a two-part question, is with the increase until 442 days now, what is the current working day? That's the first part, and the second part of that is, did the number of working days, the count of the working days stop while the negotiation was being made?
Is that all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. Will I answer your question? Ms. Yancey, you want to answer, or does engineer here want to answer?
Well, answering your second question was not.
Good.
Your first question, I didn't understand, because you asked how many working days and if...
Well, for example, June 9th, you took your advice, and it was 279 at that time. I haven't asked for quite a while, so now my question is, what is the count? I'm assuming it's greater than 279, so we have some good days, so what is the current count of the working days?
You're asking how much working days are left with this addition, just added 100 to that?
No, no, I'm asking...
What's the current count?
The slide, to answer your question easily, Anthony, 12 months, but as you know, M.D. days varies, it could fluctuate due to weather, so roughly, we're looking at a possibility it's going to be 12 months.
Well, I mean, he's asking, you know, we have a specific number of working days in the contract. Now, we know what a working day is, whether or not. So we had initial allocation of working days on the initial contract, and supplemental number three increased that working day count, and this one increases it again. So he's asking, what is the current working day count to this day right here? That's against the contract.
That they've already used up?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
How many they've matched up?
Craig, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah.
Roughly 12 months.
We have 442 days, as we mentioned, on when we quit, or as of last Thursday, we have used up 350 days, round numbers, there's some decimals in there, I'll get in all that, the 350 days. We've used up a few more since then, they've been out of work these past couple days, so we're at approximately 90 working days remaining.
Okay.
To your point about M.D. days, if you look in the project specifications, and we use the number of days that are expected, month by month, 90 days should get us somewhere into late July. I anticipate that that's going to be a point of discussion with the contractor before we finish the project, but until that time, we're just working under the contract again.
Did I get your question there? All right. We have a question in the back. Come to the podium, state your first and last name, you got three minutes.
Just for a simple down-to-earth, what are we projecting about timeline of finish? I know we're saying June, and then we extend 16300 days or so, is that kind of what we're looking at?
Well, the two supplemental agreements extended in total, if you add them together, 165 days.
Right.
Right now, the days that are remaining on the contract, counting these two supplemental agreements, would get you to, or get us to July, and that's considering the perfect scenario. However, it's more than likely going to take longer than that, which may keep, we'll have to go back to M.D. and get us supplemental agreement for more to execute.
Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed, we're going to have dry weather like we did during the summer, and they can get it done in the allocated time.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion by council, approval of the supplemental agreement number four for the Martin Bluff Roadway Improvements Project, STP 9194-00001, LPA backslash 105069-801000 to increase the contract value, add an additional 65 working days?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Didn't this also include some work around the apartments? Drainage around the apartments?
That's the last one you occurred. Increase quantities and the change in the drainage, that was the last, that was not this one, the one before that.
Oh, okay, I thought it was rolling up in this one, it wasn't.
Go ahead. Am I not right?
The last of supplemental agreement number three did include the time for the drainage changes. We included the actual quantity in this change. They were pretty minor, but we wanted to, we're doing one, you just kind of want to gather everything while you're doing it.
Okay.
So those are included, yes.
Okay, I understand. All right, thank you.
Councilman College?
I'll just be glad to see progress made on this project that's well overdue, and thanks to our city manager, our staff, our engineer for finally working this to where we're getting, moving along again.
Thank you. Councilman Gullott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to, you know, say, the city, you know, we all care about Martin Bluff Road, and for people in our community to think other areas are not important for safety, I am sort of disheartened. But I'm here to tell you that we are going to move Gochee forward in a positive light, in a positive manner, and it will get done. It might not get done when we all want it done, because if we could all have done it, or any of our city staff, we would already be out there trying to get it done ourselves with the help of the contractor, and the engineer, and whoever else we might need. So we are dedicated, we're eager to see it, and I want to let everybody know, the contractor cannot and does not want this project more completed than anybody else than us. He is committed to get it done in a fast and timely manner, but also remember, you have hiccups, you have engineering flaws, but he has brick and mortar in this city, just like you homeowners have brick and mortar in this city, and he's not from another city doing business here, and he is committed to getting the project completed and also staying in business. I repeat, also staying in business. We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? And I echo, as I said earlier, closer to 12 months, I'm not putting my name to six months in July. Councilman George, I mean, Gullott?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. And our press release said closer to 12 months. That brings us to business agenda item number three, consider a request for a variance to the square footage of a accessory structure in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District located at 409 Highway 90, GPC number 23-24-VAR, by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Bobby Nicole Seale, doing business as Riverside Auto Sales. For a variance in square foot requirement of accessory structure in a C3 Highway Commercial District, the application fee of $175 is paid October 17, 2023, all public notice requirements have been met. So some background on this property, they have an 1,800 square foot building that they use for the primary use, principal use. They're asking to build a 4,800 square foot accessory structure. The ordinance requirements for an accessory structure is that it shall be subordinate to merit, extent, and purpose for principal use. So if you do the math on that, they're asking for 1,800 square foot variance. I'm sorry, they're asking for a 3,000 square foot variance. The primary use is 100, and they're asking for 4,800. So I concluded the definition of variance in the packet, and the UDO definition hardship review also included the criteria for approval from 4.18.4, which they consider those criteria in making their decision. The recommendation of the planning commission, which the city council approved the variance as presented, with the stipulation that the buildings are removed within 90 days after the construction of the new building. So they have some existing smaller sets of construction on the property, the property owner is saying that he's wanting to remove those buildings, which is what they're going to be using for, which is what they use, small buildings, to what happened. So that being said, the council may approve the variance request presented, approve the variance request of changes, or deny the variance request. I concluded the next up in the meeting, and...
Mr. Seale. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? We do not. Do we have a motion to accept Commissioner McMenus made a motion to recommend to the city council to approve the variance that was presented with the stipulation that the buildings are removed within 90 days after the construction of the new building, second by Commissioner Ward? All were in favor, and they approved the request for a variance to the square footage of a accessory structure in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District located at 409 Highway 90, GPC number 2324-VAR, and do we have a motion by council to accept their recommendations?
Make a motion, we accept planning commission's recommendation for approval, including the stipulations placed.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Anderson, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, Ms. Seale, do you have a problem with the 90-day removal of the older buildings? Is that good?
Not at all.
Okay, that's all I got.
Councilman College?
I want to appreciate or thank the planning commission for their due diligence. They asked a lot of good questions, reading through these excerpts answers a lot of mine, so it really makes this council, when you're reviewing these items, a lot easier. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Gullott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank our planning commissioners, our city staff, for working with the Seals, and I want to thank Josh and Nikki Seale and their lovely children, they're back here to my right, y'all stand, and I just want to thank them for their investment here. If you don't know where their business is located, it's located on Highway 90, as you're headed to the east, right in front of First Baptist Church in Gochee Elementary, and they've been there for years, and they continue to be invested in Gochee, as you see with this this evening, and they support our youth and our community and other many events. So we're blessed to have y'all here in Gochee and your investment. We wish y'all a Merry Christmas. We have a motion by Councilman George, I mean, College, a second by Anderson, all in favor? Councilman Gullott?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. I look forward to seeing the new building. That brings us to business agenda item number four, consider a request for a variance to the city of Gochee's flood damage prevention ordinance for a Mississippi landmark historic structure located at 505 Magnolia Tree Drive, GPC number 23-35-VAR, and by anyone who don't know where that is in the city of Gochee, it's Gochee Elementary. By our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. We received, the planning department has received this request from Passapuca, Gochee School District. This is a variance actually to our flood damage prevention and control, and this is not something that comes before y'all at all, actually, this is probably the first one I've looked at here, this is the first one I've looked at. one I've looked at here, this is the first one I've bought before y'all. Takes a very special situation to actually be able to grant this type of variance. The applicant would like to renovate the kitchen at the Goche Elementary School. The kitchen and dining room are the oldest existing building on campus, which is a Mississippi landmark historic structure. Because the existing structure is designated as a landmark, it cannot be modified or elevated out of the flood plain. So the applicant will need this variance for the city and from our city flood damage prevention ordinance in order to make the renovations necessary and then to further use the kitchen facilities inside. So our flood damage prevention ordinance has a limit for improving structures that are below base elevation and freefall, that's fifty percent. So they're asking to approve this greater than fifty percent. That is the variance that they're asking for, just to be clear in this form of story if that's the case. So I've included some criteria from our flood damage permission ordinance for your review, and the planning commission recommends the city council approve this variance as presented due to the unique characteristics presented. City council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request of changes, or deny the variance request. Applicant has representation of denied.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That brings us to public comments. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three?
Mark Olson, twenty-five oh four, Robert Iram Drive, Goche is a unique building, probably the only one in Goche that I think should be preserved, so I hope to find a way to do that because I'm sure eventually it's gonna be repurposed into something else, but any idea what the lifespan of the building is, the school is?
I think the engineering, could y'all answer that?
That's for just here.
Nineteen forty.
I think he's saying what, how much further his, how the life expectancy, meaning how much, how long it has, Mr. Booth?
We have not done that analysis, so, you know, but it's a Mississippi landmark structure, so essentially the school district has to maintain it, continue to maintain it, it can't go anywhere, so it's not quite a guarantee, but hopefully it continues to take care of this at the point.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the variance to the city of Goche's flood damage preservation ordinance for a Mississippi landmark historic structure located at five zero five Magnolia Tree Drive, G P C twenty-three thirty-five V I R?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman College, any discussion starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
I hope the school will be there long after I'm gone, it's been there since before I was here, so...
Councilman College?
Yeah, definitely a unique circumstances here with this building and the age approving the remodeling and then having the flood zone criteria, but I think we've covered all our bases here, so thank you for your hard work on this, Scott.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I'm glad we are remodeling everything because this is a school that has history in my family, so I look forward to them getting their remodeling, no further comments.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
No discussion.
You know, Mr. Fuller was my principal when I attended and Billy Booth back there, I don't know if anybody else is in the room that was under his administration, and then our last year, when I was there, it was under a lady by the name of Joanne Wavre that lived in Ocean Springs, but they were great educators, great principals, we were blessed to have them in Goche, but Mr. Fuller continues to be a part of our community and about historic preservation, and we are, because of him preserving the Color, West Pasco La Color Schoolhouse at the entrance to City Park as we get funding, we move further along with that project, and that was due to his initiative to get it put on the, one of the most endangered historic buildings in the state, so kudos to Mr. Fuller, kudos to the school district, and Mr. Olson, as I stated, it is on the historic list, so there are strict guidelines that you have to do to maintain that building, so hopefully it will be here for many more generations, and thank you, Mr. Booth, for recognizing the history when it was built, we appreciate that too. We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman College, all in favor. Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Consider a variance, a request for a variance to a minimum square footage requirements for dwelling in an A G agriculture zoning district located at Carter Road, G P C number twenty-three dash thirty-seven dash V I R, by planning director Mr. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning department has received this request from Durandy Bosar for the one thousand five square foot variance for dwelling in an ag district. 号码是八五二九八零八三，all public notice requirements will be met. Some background here, the applicant would like to build a three hundred and twenty square foot dwelling in an ag agricultural district. The minimum square footage requirement in this district for residential dwelling is thirteen hundred and twenty-five square feet, so she's proposing to use a high Q forty-foot shipping container as the shell of the structure. I've included the definition of hardship, again, for your review and the criteria for the approval of this variance to be considered in the U D O document, section four, title four. The planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance request with changes that the home meet or exceed the drawings presented. The city council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request of changes, or deny the variance request, and the applicant will see this tonight also to be answered in the question, which we will have.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion to, for the variance to the minimum square footage requirements for dwelling in an A G agriculture zoning district located at Carter Road, G P C number twenty-three dash thirty-seven dash V I R?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George?
Just to clarify, this is with stipulations also.
So you're making a motion to approve the request recommendation?
Yep.
Okay. And that's what you were seconding, Councilman George?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George. Any discussion starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Is the builder here?
Not the senior.
Not the senior? Are there any plans to later build a bigger home on the property?
No, sir, not at this time.
Not at this time? Is the property big enough to build a bigger structure home on?
Yes, sir.
And this could maybe turn into a mother-in-law's cottage or something like that?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But she just said there wasn't no other home being built.
There is no plan.
No plan at all. But I asked Scott a question.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Councilman College?
Based on the drawings in the package here, it's on a fixed foundation, looks like it's on piers, and it's got a porch coming out projected from it that's obviously on foundations and piers, and they gotta provide structural drawings on this. Now, I understand, I mean, there was some discussion back and forth, especially during planning commission, about whether this fell under a, I guess, a single-family dwelling versus like something of a manufactured homes, and based on your recommendation, the fixed foundation, it falls more under a single-family dwelling.
Yes, sir, Councilman, I mean, it's kind of open to interpretation. I didn't find that the definition of modular home didn't really fit that, so I just threw it in the category that I felt was appropriate for the same thing as dwelling. They are adding a lot around the shell of the, the storage container. They are only allowed to do this with engineered drawings, so the engineer is basically certifying this is a single-family dwelling.
And this is in an agricultural zoned area, which kind of has a lot of leeway with regards to allowing manufactured homes, modular homes, things of this nature.
Yes, sir.
So looking at like a, like a single wide manufactured home is just slightly a little bit bigger than what this Conex box or this, whatever, what the terminology was in here, so...
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so I just want to clarify that it is an agricultural area, kind of, you know, it's a little spot, it's a nice piece of property land, so, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Gillett? Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Okay.
My, my, the problem is, is this thing is not meeting the minimum standards of the thirteen hundred square foot throughout the city. My concern would be if we allow this to be out there, what's gonna happen in the next door to somebody in a subdivision wants to build one of these, put one in? I, I have a concern with that, a serious concern with allowing this to happen anywhere in the city.
Thank you, Councilman Gillett. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
I'm gonna have to say I agree with Gordon with going below the minimum square footage requirement. The build of the home is not a concern of mine because a Conex box is a very strong structure, I mean, it could be stronger than a framed home, but it's going below the square footage that's an issue for me.
Thank you, Councilman George. I just wanna echo what Councilman Gillett said and also Councilman George, you know, I think it is a great rendering, I think it's a secured structure, and I think can, you know, we're not talking about the type of structure here, we're talking about square footage is all we're voting on here, and I think it sets a precedence in our city when you cannot go to a sister city and get that low of square footage, and after we had people rebuilding after Katrina, they were not allowed to even do three hundred and twenty square foot, so I feel like they were not allowed, and then we have a minimum square footage. Many years ago, when I was on the council, I suggested us going back to the county's recommendation of eight hundred and fifty or eight hundred, what was it, Scott? Eight hundred, and people, we did, I did not, we didn't have the support to go that low at that time. If it was a little closer to the thirteen twenty-five, I could see maybe allowing something a little over eight hundred because we do have homes in our area that were built here that we have provided variances for that are under our square footage to have their power turned on, and I would be willing, I just feel like three hundred is setting a precedence with what's the difference between, and I understand it's an ag use, but RE use is in a way, it's got a lot of land around an RE setting, so I feel like I don't want somebody feeling like we're not supportive of the type of structure you're trying to build. The issue is the square footage requirements, and that's what we're here for, I just, I have a lot of concern like the ones we've heard earlier, so...
Mayor, may I ask Scott one more quick?
Go ahead.
Under action taken, Scott, one of the chairman of the planning commission made a motion to recommend that the city council approve the variance request with changes that the home meet or exceed the drawings as presented. What changes is she talking about there?
Not changes, what they were asking in that meeting was that this structure meets exactly what the drawings presented were, like aesthetically, is what they were asking. You know, that the drawings show a porch, it's at an office front, and...
Okay, okay, meet or exceed the drawings that were presented?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's changes around that.
They just want to just allow just a Conex box to be placed on slab and then call that as the structure, I think that they would have decided.
Okay, I understand, that's all.
Can I, can I make one other comment?
Yeah.
I understand that Councilman Gillett and George's and yours concerns, this is kind of a, a new area of build that the city is seeing, I mean, we went through a similar situation with Mima cottages after the storm that was designated more towards a manufactured, well, actually, no, it's its own designation, Katrina Cottage, and some of those are not much bigger than these and they're allowed in A Gs with conditional uses, they're allowed in R-three zoned areas, so, I mean, this is something new, I don't think we should be scared of something new, but I think we definitely need to investigate our U D O as far as this upcoming usage that's becoming more prevalent, for instance, I mean, I think Foley, Alabama has a whole business district with these type structures assembled on top of each other and around there, so that was my additional two cents in rebuttal to which I'll have commented on.
Okay, thank you, I didn't know Councilman College were having rebuttals, but we, if that's what we're having, it's, once again, it's not the type of structure here we're voting on. We are voting, and I'm a hundred percent, and I will tell you, I have recruited and been working to recruit urban development with container parks, me and Ms. Jancy both have spoken to people about container parks, and as Mr. Anderson told the planning commission, if this was, a container is able, that's not the issue here. That could be built anywhere in the city of Goche right now. If it met the square footage requirements, it could be built today. It's the square footage requirements, and I do agree with Councilman College, we do need to revisit the U D O, and once again, I would prepare us bringing our minimum square footage back down to meet our counties at eight hundred square feet, and if we wanna go lower to three something for all over the city, I would be glad that we look at that at that time. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? All oppose. Councilman Gillett? Councilman Gillett?
Opposed.
Councilman Jackson?
Abstained.
You're abstained?
Yeah, I'm abstained.
Okay. So, motion failed. That brings us to business agenda item number six. Consideration for a property owner initiated rezoning of property from R-two high-density multifamily residential to A G agriculture located at Seabird Road, G P C number twenty-three dash thirty-six dash R Z, by planning director Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning department has received this request from Box Town Fouries for this rezoning of property on Seabird Road. The application fee, three hundred dollars is paid on October nineteen, twenty twenty-three, and all public notice requirements will be met. This, some background on this property, of course, is located for one, the current zoning is R-two, which is multifamily residential. Existing land used to this space, the future land use designation predicts use for the surrounding zoning is ag to the north, south, and west, and industrial, also... So I've included the review criteria for council consideration, which is, as you see, one, two, either there was a mistake in the original zoning or the character of the surrounding area has changed to such extent as to justify rezoning if there was public need for additional property rezoning according to their request. The planning commission recommends the city council approve the rezoning based on the evidence presented in the criteria. The planning commission recommends the city council approve the rezoning based on the evidence presented meeting criteria. The city council may approve the rezoning of the subject area from R two high density multifamily residential to ag agricultural for denied rezonation. I've included the excerpt from the G P C meeting and the complete packet for review and the app.
Thank you, Mr. Angerson, and thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we, do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six?
About to phrase this, how did you?
It normally is warm up in here, but tonight, I don't know what happened, but, sorry.
I think somebody bumped it down when they were leaving, because it wasn't.
Um, so, any public comments on business agenda item number six? None. That brings us, do we have a motion to accept the planning commission's, um, recommendation that they, um, approve the rezoning based on the evidence presented meets the criteria?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I can't for the life of me recall why council would make this an R two during the rezoning area, but that's all I got, okay.
That's what I was thinking. Um, Councilman Goulart?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
Discussion.
And I agree with Councilman College, I just came for the life of me to see how it got R two when it's agricultural use all the way around it, um, and that would be a case of spot zoning. And if you look at it, if we were to ask our attorney, he probably would tell us that. Um, so we have a, um, motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Councilman Goulart?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Counts, you go, and now, Ms. College, will you tap the door and let Mr. Danos say? Oh, you did, oh, thank you, Chief Latch. Thank you, Ms. College. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, approval of the docket of claims. Um, they've been presented and provided to us by, um, our city clerk in her department. They've been online, so all the residents can see them. Um, so that is our staff presentation. Do y'all have any comments on business agenda item number seven? Do we have a motion from council?
Make the motion, we approve the docket of claims, provided that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. And any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Goulart?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No, no.
All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Councilman George, um, Goulart?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. The consent agenda are approved in one motion unless any council members want to remove any. Um, one, approval of the minutes from regular council meeting held December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Two, receive November twenty twenty-three privilege license reports. Three, resolution directing the placement of liens on properties located in Goche, Mississippi for fees and charges incurred by the city of Goche for, to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code, section twenty-one dash nineteen dash eleven. Four, approval of the agreement between the city of Goche and the unfazed show and ban for the twenty twenty-four Mardi Gras tailgate event. And five, approval of a business services agreement with spark light for Wi-Fi and internet services to the Sound Amphitheater. Anybody want to pull one? If not, do we have a motion by council to approve consent agenda items one through five as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Goulart?
Aye.
Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. Um, the first is the citizen comments. You have three minutes, come to the podium, state your first name, last name, and address. And Councilman College will hold up a number one, um, when it gets close to your time. We go down the list, first up is Mr. Anthony Snow.
Um, the first thing I was, I don't know, this is, um.
That started, I don't know.
Oh, I forgot to say, Anthony Snow, twenty-two oh five Highland Drive. Um, the first thing, I've given everybody the most recent, um, statuses of the lights that I did. Um, the last time I gave a report was, actually, December eighteenth of last year, the day is the nineteenth. Um, so everybody has a copy of the lights there. I have a light for Ramona after I finished to give an update, so it's all on public record. She already gave it, it just moved earlier today. Um, the second thing is the hydrant status, um, about the hydrants that I got hit like a year ago, and then another one four months ago. I'd like to know the statuses of replacing those because I'm afraid that at some point that the hydrant, the hydrant is going to be needed to be used, and obviously, the hydrant's not there right now, two of them. Um, the last one is, can somebody give me an update on this funding, the sidewalk funding for, from Valley Wood to Highway Ninety? That was it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ramona, that you provided on the lighting, um, can you, because you did a reporting of this a few council meetings ago, but, um.
And at some point, we did have all the lights on. We, now we are missing bulbs again that have gone out. They're under warranty, we take them to Chancellor Electric, and they send them off to Topaz. They're the company that makes them. Once they look at the P O or the invoice from the time that we bought them and the actual bulb, then Topaz will set ship replacements to, to Chancellor Electric, and then we can go and get them. So we are waiting on the bulbs, but they've all been taken over to, to them. Mr. Billy said that he had sent them to Topaz, and so now we're waiting for Topaz to send us the new bulbs. And we do have some new poles that are up, and they have, they have bulbs in them. One of the new poles, after, uh, they put the bulb in, it blew, and Howard's working on getting that prepared.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, for that update, and we do business with them too at the law firm, and we had to wait just like the city does, unfortunately, but they're under warranty and they don't cost us more money. That brings us to the second question, hydrants. Um, I think I can answer the hydrant question, I'll give it a stab, and y'all can, um, update me if I'm incorrect, because they gave an update of the hydrant status, Mr. Snow at a previous board meeting, um, a few meetings ago. Um, our past service provider had parts on order, couldn't order some parts. Um, backordered is what they told the city administration, and the city administration got with our new service provider, H two O, who has been doing a fabulous job in the city of Goche responding. And they were going to get with our public works director and our fire chief and see if there was other means to parts we could order or retrofit, and Councilman College suggested some of that, and we are working to get that completed. That's the update, correct, Ms. Morgan?
The one on Martin bluff has been repaired and is back up there. The one, um, just before you get on, that hit the hood drive right there, that one has been repaired. Working.
Okay, so, Mr. Snow, that answers your question, ones up and working, they're working on the other one.
Thank you.
Um, the third, the update on the funding of Valley Wood, we just voted on something not long ago on this project.
To activate the, it was slated for some this year or next year, and we didn't request to activate that funding for this like, I have a year, is what I think.
Right, so, Mr. Snow, basically, it was to activate funding sources for the project. We voted to accept some and ask for some additional funding, correct? What, not what that was for, Ms. Yancy, Ms. Fisher?
I think they give us on GRP, it's for GRPC.
They say.
So when you get GRPC funds, they slate those projects for certain years. And I think it's upcoming to be slated within that year, so we're requesting that it be activated. But I think that means is, we're ready to go ahead.
Yes.
That was my understanding.
Slating we're ready.
So the funding's, the funding's there.
The funding was there, and it's a GRPC project, and we voted to activate it at several board meetings ago. I don't remember off the top of my head which one, but we have voted on it. That project was voted on in a board meeting. That answers us. Next, Mr. Claude Stubbs. And happy belated birthday, Mr. Stubbs.
Claude Stubbs, twenty-five oh one Bayou Ben Road, uh, I have a couple different things. Number one was, uh, I have electronic equipment, I guess, um, monitors, or I have a couple of old box-sized TVs that I want to get rid of, how can I go about disposing of those? That's number one. Number two is where we call out Bayou Ben Road coming around, Martin bluff, need to get that cut back a little bit. And also, a little further up the road from the substation, there's a sign that says there's a neighborhood. Could we put something on that because numerous times, people staying at right lane, and if you're coming out of Bayou Ben Road, you can get your off. So, uh, slow the speed down, or put a sign up, or something with flashing lights, or whatever, because that's really a danger coming out of there. And it's even worse, I have a trailer, and I'm putting a trailer, and people come around here, tear the trailer, the cars, everything up, so. Can we do something to try to rectify that situation? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. The, um, first answer to your question, the electronics, we do partner with Jackson County, um, for hazardous waste day, and they normally do that around Earth Day, and the city manager currently has been in contact with them, um, to still be a partner for that event. So when they set a date, um, we will announce it and all that, so that's the date, that would be available. Um, two, we will request the city manager to get with the public works director and service provider to cut back those limbs, and they are new, um, as I stated, but they're doing a great job, so once they learn all what we have normally requested before, I know they'll be diligent, um, to monitor that, so. Um, that's just in between the substation and the, um, Bayou Ben. Three, if we could look at some signage, I know we have the mirror, and we have some of small sign.
One small sign.
One small, but maybe if we got something a little larger, a little further north, um, maybe that would do good if we could look into that with, um, Ms. Yancy, with you and your staff. Um, that brings us to Brenda, Ms. Brenda?
Tiva.
Tiva, I thought that was you, but you, I was, I know, I was making, I couldn't read your writing, I didn't want to call you the, um, come on.
She wants to go ahead.
Okay, so we're gonna let Terry Putz, you're gonna, you're, are you gonna speak after her, or you don't want to speak? After her, okay, so we're gonna move next on the list to Terry Putz, um, Ms. Putz?
Terry Putz, sixteen twelve Cambridge Drive, and I'm here to speak about, uh, AT&T laying the cables in our yard without our permission, um, giving us phone numbers to call to complain about that do not work, not getting no feedback. Uh, I called City Hall today, they transferred me to code enforcement, they transferred me to utilities. Then I later on called City Hall again, they told me about this meeting tonight. Now, I, we as citizens pay our taxes. We as citizens have a right to know who coming in our yard to do what. I feel like they should ask for commission. They tell us about this easement that the city have, that me, where is it? How far it is? Give us some paperwork, tell us where to go, but to just come in, giving us false information, doing the work without our permission, is very unacceptable. It, it really is disrespectful too. I asked the guys to leave my yard yesterday, I came home at night, they waited, matter of fact, other, um, neighbors say, no, don't go, don't come in our yard, they did not go in the yard. They waited till most of us that go to work, they went in our yard. When I told them to leave my yard last night, they got their equipment they live. Come, they come back after I went to work today, and they finished putting up this tower in my yard. So, me as a citizen, I need to know what to do, I need to know who I need to talk to, not, not pay phone numbers.
Okay. Go ahead, do you finish, and I'm gonna answer you, Ms. Putz.
Give us the information we need to get in the, uh, contact with the proper people so we can understand what's going on. Not just come in our yard, dig it up, I, hey, I'm a flower girl, this young lady, he'll just remove trees, just grow back up grass, you come to dig it up in the winter time. This is unacceptable. We work too hard. If the city owns this much of our property, and we know this, we know not to put nothing there. Fence, flowers, whatever, cut it off.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, so, we can answer, um, and if it's the same subject, maybe we'll answer it. Ms. Brenda might not have to say something unless she just wants, but, um, unfortunately, I have to apologize. You know, there's two things here going on, and unfortunately, we've had this happen in other neighborhoods in the city, and it's not nice, and no, you're right, I'll tell you, AT&T is not a good community partner. I'm not gonna lie to you, um, they come on private property, or, but, we might not have an easement, but the utility and power company might have an easement in your subdivision. You would have to look at your plat to see that. Um, some of them are so old, they were developed in the county, and we might not have them, but, you know, planning does. But if you call the planning department, AT&T, their contractors have to pull permits. If they've not pulled a permit, they cannot be working, and we can shut them down. Um, we will let Ms. Yancy, um, respond on behalf of the city staff on who to contact and the city that works for her. Um, but we're here to help you, and unfortunately, um, we might not be able to tell you the exact lines. You might have to look at your deed with your survey that should be attached to ever. If you come to our office, Ms. Carrie DeMar, call me, and your client will help you.
She called and spoke with Mr. Ramona today, who said that she would look into it, want somebody to, okay. And Ramona did look into it. It took her all day, so we had to go pull the plat ourselves. You wanna?
When we pulled on, yes ma'am, when we pulled the plat, and they did pull a permit for this work, so when we pulled the plat, I discovered that there is a five-foot easement out front, so from the edge of the road, five feet in, is a city easement where our water and sewer lines flow. Now, in the rear of your house, from the back of your house to, where the, uh, the house on the other side of the street backs up to yours, they have a twenty-foot, it's a drainage and utility easement. And I guess it's difficult for them to get back there, so they went to the front easement, and they should not have been more than five feet into your property.
More than that?
Yes, ma'am, and I have called Mark Sullivan, he's the head engineer for AT&T over this area, and informed him of what I found on the plat when I, when I had it pulled today. And he was supposed to go and instruct everybody to move it back to the five feet. And after speaking with Ms. Yancy today, if they happen to pit any of our water and sewer lines, we would be able to shut them down for working so closely.
They have, they have.
They have. How many lines have they, have you had to prepare?
I saw.
Any more than five?
I saw. In there.
I will continue to speak with Mark Sullivan, it's his name, and get as many answers I can for your question. But they're supposed to now move back. And he also assured me that before they're completely finished, they have to put it back to as good as it was before or better to to cover their work. And they said they don't do it immediately. They come in phases, but that they would come back and put your yard back together. I'll be happy to discuss it further with you and and get the specific questions answered for you through Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, and are you gonna be, Ramona, you're gonna be the point, Ms. Jancy, you're, Ms. Morgan's gonna be the point of contact? Or your office or planning department office? Who's gonna be responsible?
Ramona will be the point of contact.
Okay.
Our water lines in that five foot is meets for.
Okay.
Shut them down.
And if Ms. Ms. Morgan will relay to them, that, tell them to review our meeting.
Right.
Okay? And they don't want to hear from Mr. Danos?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Because he will send a letter if he needs to.
And Ms. Morgan, if you can, if they're actually putting junction box towers of all these lines, make darn sure they're doing it at property lines and not in the middle of somebody's front yard.
Well, and well, and then that brings me to question, they're putting them in their front yards and not the backyards?
Yes.
No, that don't even meet our unified development ordinance. Ms. Jancy, can you require a meeting with them and Mr. Danos and Ms. Morgan?
Well, I mean, we have AT&T towers. There usually towers in there, but they put them at the property lines by where the utility poles are.
They say, yeah, on the five feet off that road, they have put it in your yard, but it shouldn't be there.
That's not acceptable.
So let's know, like, hell, am that.
But even if it's within that five foot, it's in the middle of yard, it needs to be at the property line between two property.
What I hear from her, they weigh more than five feet.
But what I hear, hold on, hold on, let me, hold on. Miss, what I heard from Ms. Morgan, the front easement was for water and sewer only, correct?
It doesn't state it. It just says five-foot easement. I believe it to be just our water and sewer.
Okay, Mr. Ms. Jancy, Mr. Danos, can y'all look at that? If that's the case, AT&T don't need to be nowhere near our water and sewer, number one. We already know this. It happened in Dila Forest. It happened in College Park.
Westgate.
And Westgate. Secondly, put it in the back so the residents don't have to look at the ugly stuff. Nor us have to worry about it when we have a water line issue. And then AT&T's the world's worst about coming to repair something. And if we damage something working on our lines, it's not acceptable. So let's just go ahead and nip it in the bud, and let's address it with them. Happy um, welcome to the end of twenty twenty-three with AT&T. Um, if you have them as service providers, call and tell them what you think. Ms. Brenda, do you want to still come?
Yes.
Okay, come here and state your first and last name and address.
Uh, I'm Brenda Tiva, sixteen oh nine King Fisher. And I want to know uh, that this won't happen again. I mean, our, or if it does, that we should be notified. And like AT&T, they've got a number you can call, but nobody answers, nobody answers that number.
Well, what I can tell you, unfortunately, AT&T thinks they ruled the rule, world.
Oh, I know.
Okay, because they're corporate America. Unfortunately, we do have a little bit of protection if your plat has some protection in it. So hopefully, Ms. Jancy, between Ms. Jancy, Ms. Morgan, and Mr. Danos, having a meeting, looking at everything, we'll be able to tell you more. And also, if they're out there working, you'll know what they can and cannot do. And then we can put you in contact with somebody directly. To Mr. Sullivan, we'll provide you his office, name and number, a direct line.
I came home last night at seven o'clock. They had all their truck lots. They were out there still digging. And I couldn't go down the road until they turned off their lot so I could see to get in my driveway.
And don't wait to that response to that, don't we have a working timeframe or do we not, Mr. Ankrison, Ms. Jancy?
On permit, the permit is a time.
How late can?
Do we know what the time is?
Are you talking about how late in the day?
Late at night.
Night.
Okay, but they're disturbing the peace thing, is there not chief?
I mean, they have.
Okay, let's plead to it. There is some disturbing the peace times that I think are noise ordinance. Um, after a certain time, and then Mr. Chief Pepper, there's not?
No.
And we're putting the bright light so you can't see.
Well, when Councilman Elbin didn't, how did we address that when you were the chief with um, ceasefire? When they tried to work in the middle of the night and we had to shut them down? Do you remember?
As long as they were, they, they were done by a certain time. They weren't out there that late in in the evenings.
That one night, it was eleven thirty. It riddled our, the whole subdivisions.
Well, I think they agreed at that point with the shutdown because we were getting so many complaints.
Okay, well, let's look into that. If we need to create an ordinance that you can't work after certain times, let's look at that. We can be um, we'll help you. We'll figure out something to, they're not gonna. Okay. Um, Ms. Delamore.
Delamore, nineteen twenty West Gate Parkway, Ruston Hill. I'm here looking at you.
Merry Christmas to you.
I'm looking at you. I got your Christmas. Let me tell you something. You have not got in touch with Gochay Police Department. You got your lawyer over there. Somebody lying on you. Said they hacked your page, and you have not proven a thing. And you sit up here every chance you get and just been defiant. I wanna know, I asked you this over and over again, why haven't you filed a police report? Saying that someone hacked your page. It's against the law, and you know it. So must be lying. If you walk through nothing about it, you must be lying. But why don't you just leave? Why are you, are you not holding up some money? You need to drop that back, you know? Gochay over there, you come over there, and they can help you if somebody hacked your page. But like I said, over and over again, you haven't filed a police report. That mean you must be lying. Do you need me to loan you some money or something? You, you need money? Why are you here? Uh, what's the problem?
I don't have a problem.
Oh, you don't have a problem?
I don't have a.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Just.
Okay, I'm there, I'm there.
Okay.
Chief, would it do me any good to file a police report on something like this?
Uh, we can do search warrants with Facebook and give more data possibly. It's no guarantee, but it's possible.
I can, I can give you my Facebook files myself. I've already got them, but I already had them looked at. But it won't do me no really much good to file a police report on something like this, so. That's all I got.
Um, Mr. Charles Moore.
My name is Charles Moore. I live in nineteen twenty West Gate Parkway, Gochay, Mississippi. Um, I saw before about the uh, cleaning the drains out. They have, when it rained a couple of days ago, the water kept running across the street. The grain wouldn't take it in. So we got a lot of, I, I walk there every morning, and so a lot of the drain drains have uh.
Pine straw and everything.
Yes. And other stuff in there, so. And uh, below me, that whole ditch seemingly needs to be cleared out. I live in nineteen twenty West Gate. I'm gonna ask that this break by the fourth time, I indeed that I talked with Ruston about it a long time ago. But if y'all got the best uh, people that's working in the city now, they need to come out there and let me show them what they can do. Show me.
Thank you.
That's all with the concrete flume also for us.
Yeah. And also Rusty Allison and my nephew sitting right there, he's uh, played football with Gochay.
Congratulations.
And let me say this, when you demonize these little kids and talk about them the way you did, call them out their name, the N-word, that's not acceptable.
That was not me, sir.
You're a ledger, a leg, a leg, saying that. So that's not good. Especially my little nephew, twelve years old, that's just bad. So really, I'm asking you, but the black American benefits step down, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Oh, look, we have H two O, those con, lot, in, in Westgate, there's a lot of these concrete ditches to the north that fall into the Sioux Bayou area, into the marsh. And there's one by Mr. Morris's house that I think runs down behind the apartments off the Gochay Van Cleve Road. Needs cleaning very bad. It, I don't think they've been cleaned in about four years now. That one, that big ditch behind the apartments and the uh, stuff off the Gochay Van Cleve Road, I don't know when it was cleaned last. But even the concrete ditches in there, they haven't been cleaned in three or four years now. They need, all of them need to be looked at. Appreciate it.
Um, Mr. Moore, I think, if I'm not correct, but Ms. Jancy and Ms. Morgan, I think y'all have that on the uh, list. They have that West Gate drainage on a list. Unfortunately, um, they are a little behind, but they are catching up. But we've had some emergencies um, that they've had to get on. And then also a backlog that they took over that our former service provider was not doing in the last few months of operating. So we have people been waiting to tie in our water and sewer dysfunction. Unfortunately, it's caused a delay in a backup um, due to the changeover, but they are dedicated and committed to getting back on track and work, to address the work orders as fast as possible. I just wanted to give you an update to let you know they do have it on their radar, um, this pine straw and the drainage. That brings us to Mr. Benny Coleman.
Benny Coleman, fourteen twelve Route, Big Command, uh, Good Evening. Uh, Rusty, I'm here to uh, ask you to resign. Uh, like Mr. Moore said, uh, I kinda, it's more kind of, well, we kinda fell out. I was holding up for you. I asked, uh, gave you the benefit of the doubt until you said that uh, Reverend Booth targeted your family. And everybody here knows he didn't do that.
And he did what?
Targeted your family. He, he uh, said something about your family.
He, he did in the meeting, sir. He said that my, me and my family was gonna be regretful.
I was holding up for you until that happened. And uh, you said he did, and I, no one, no one else heard that uh.
It's in, it's on Facebook, and I can get it for you.
So I, that's when I said, well, maybe you did, what he's saying, they saying you did. But uh, you, I won't say I love you, man. I, I love you, but uh, I just can't uh, support you on that. When, when you being a councilman, that's like Mr. Moore said, these children are either, we can't let that council or spread it to them that, that you allegedly say. So I'm gonna ask you to resign, and I wanna thank y'all for your time.
Mr. Billy Booth.
Hello, booth, fourteen oh five Hill Crest Street. Good evening. This season, Christmas season is a time of reflection. And as each of us should reflect, we should reflect upon our blessings. We should reflect upon the true meaning of this season, a time which we have set aside to commemorate the birth of Jesus. We should also reflect upon ourselves to see how we're presently living. Do we love our neighbor in word and in deed? Um, I'd like to also say I'm grateful uh, for what this season represents. I'm grateful for each of you, as, as, as many of you state, this staff, uh, worked diligently and very hard to make this a great place to live, work, and, and play. I thank you so much for that. Um, and although, as you probably already know, I have not been contacted by Councilman Emerson, considering the recent Facebook post that was attributed to his Facebook page. I pray God's blessings are on each of you, and I hope you have a great Christmas and enjoy family and friends.
Thank you. Mark Olson.
In response.
You wanna just name an address?
Just an answer to uh, Jackson County Seamen Road Landfield will take his electronics for free.
Okay. Do you hear that? Mr. Stubbs? Okay. That's good, didn't it? Thank you, Mr. Olson, for that. Um, Mr. Truitt.
Name's Ken Truitt, five zero zero five, Deerfield, West Gate subdivision, Gochay. Uh, I like to piggyback uh, what guys were saying about the uh, uh, the ditches. The ditches really need to be cleaned out. Every time it rains, we have flooding over there. And y'all talking about uh, by the apartment, that's behind my house, okay? Between my house and a nursing home, from the dollar store all the way down to Sioux Bayou. Floods down there, okay? Uh. And it, it even floods in the front of my house, like a moat around my house. Like a concrete ditch comes down on the side. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
It's a moat around my house.
Water comes down, uh, what's that?
It comes three different directions.
What's that road, uh?
Uh, Heritage.
Heritage, and it runs right into that ditch.
Broadgate, Heritage, Broadgate, Deerfield, behind me.
And it's going into a ditch that's already full of water.
Councilman Anderson, let's let him say, don't, we don't waste his three minutes speaking. I know, but we don't want to waste your three minutes.
And piggyback, these ladies talking about, I have uh, uh, the uh, AT&T ju, box and everything. Front yard, every time it rains, it's flooded. The box is flooded. You know, you don't know whether, uh, I, I asked them, I, I say, would I get electrocuted walking out there in that water? You know, water over the uh, junction box? And, oh, no, 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 no. They said, everything's secure. Okay? The other thing, I've been there forty-five years, okay? And the people that's been there a long time, they have security lights. They pay with the utility bills, okay? Well, we have new people that moved in there, rebuilt homes, all right? They don't have security lights, especially on the West Gate Parkway. That's really, it has very dark spots and that uh, city probably come in somewhere on that easement and put a few park, uh, few, put a few park, uh, few lights, city lights going down the middle of that. And that might alleviate the running over uh, mailboxes and, and hitting bushes and cars turning over. Uh, uh, hit the uh, West Gate and hollow, old hollow signs. Security deal, okay? People walking down, we, we don't have uh, sidewalks, people walking down the street, might get run over. You know, so uh, we need some, uh, some work done in West Gate. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Mr. Truitt. That brings us to council comments. We start with, um, second meeting of the month, we start with Councilman Elvin.
Just like to thank, as always, the employees and the department, the different departments. Uh, you guys are the backbone of the city. Couldn't do it without you. Uh, also, our H two O Solutions contractor, thank you for the work you've done thus far. I wish Pro's not here, but I like to thank them for the work they're doing. Uh, for the people that are looking for something to do on New Year's Eve, Hickory Hills Country Club has a New Year's Eve party that you're welcome to. And it starts at eight o'clock. It ends at two o'clock in the morning. And uh, just wanna wish everybody here and in the city a Merry Christmas and a very blessed two thousand twenty-four.
Councilman Anderson.
Uh, definitely in agreement with Councilman Elvin, and uh, just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and God bless everyone, and a special Merry Christmas to a special group of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Collins.
Uh, not to sound like a broken record, but uh, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Uh, not to sound like a broken record, but, uh, Merry Christmas to everybody and have a Happy New Year. Thank you to everybody that is beneficial towards the city, helps the city, the residents that are involved with the city, the volunteers, the youth, just everybody. Just thank you and thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gillett.
Very short. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Um, Councilman, thank you, Councilman Gillett. Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yes, I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays. And, uh, Ms. Delamore, it is good to hear your beautiful voice in the building again. Sorry I couldn't be there. Um, and, uh, thanks to all the supporters that are coming to the city council meeting, and that, that'll be all.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, and safe travels home, um, from work. Um, Councilman George?
Uh, twenty twenty-three has been a challenging year in many aspects. Um, but I think the staff and the team that we have here, we've accomplished a lot. Um, looking back over the years since I started this, um, it, it seems to get more challenging, but it also seems to get more rewarding. Um, we've got a lot larger project, projects that are coming to fruition. We've got a lot of deals we're making, a lot of money coming in from federal and state level. We still have Paula on board, although some days I wonder, because it gets rough. Uh, you know, there's a lot to look back on, there's a lot to look forward to, a lot of positivity. I think the twenty twenty-four is gonna be an exceptional year for Gochay, and, I mean, we're starting out the first quarter with a new amphitheater. And I don't think it's resonated with a lot of citizens or really the coast in general, just what that means for us. We go to live music concerts all over the country, my wife and I do. We go to local towns, we go far off, to Denver, Colorado, New York City, wherever, and it don't matter how small the town is or how little the town has, but those amphitheaters grow everything. It's like an Easter egg. You get all this goodness in there, and you don't know what's gonna, it's gonna surprise you, really. Um, a lot of other developments gonna follow through because those people have to have somewhere to shop, they have to have somewhere to eat, they have to have somewhere to stay. You can't put the horse, the, the cart before the horse, but I think this is a excellent project. And Paula and staff and council have all worked very diligently with our partners, uh, to make sure that this is done correctly and it's gonna really benefit us. Um, look forward to some announcements at the first part of the year for our lineup, which is something I can't wait to see because I'll be buying all the tickets. Um, but, uh, that's just something I'd like to, to really pinpoint there. Uh, now, as far as Paula, we're talking about Christmas and our staff, you know, everybody here is, plays a pivotal role in everything we do. And it's all under the guidance of Miss Paula. And we're very fortunate to have her with us, because honestly, if we didn't have her, I, I can't think of one person that could fill those little shoes. Uh, honestly, I've practiced praying a few times, and it, you just, I can't think of anybody, uh, who can do it with a smile on her face, no matter how hard the day before the day it's coming is. Uh, she gets it done. So while Christmas is not, it's not always Christmas here with the city, you are the gift that keeps on giving. Uh, and we really appreciate you. Uh, so council, you know, as we do every year, we put a little thing together for you, and you have it over there right now, but just to show that we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
And yes, I have to go after that, so. I just, you know.
Hey, look, okay, it's always Casey's show, I keep my mouth shut, you put that tone right.
That's right, that's right, that's right. As we heard today, Miss Jancy got to hear it, it's, um, that is what it is, I guess. Maybe they heard it from you, Councilman George.
Um, probably.
But, you know, to echo what everybody here who has said, I'm blessed to work with, um, leaders who give back to the city, the county, the state, and the federal level. And as the year comes to an end, I think how blessed I am and how blessed Gochay is. And how blessed our residents, our visitors, our youth. Um, tonight, those young boys, they've been recognized, you can ask Miss Bilbo. They've been recognized many times since the Super Bowl, but they deserve to be recognized many more. Um, and I'm blessed to represent them and go support them throughout the year, um, when I'm able. But as Councilman George said, the leader that runs the day-to-day operations of the city, Miss Jancy, every day, I, I think, please, Lord, just, we get through another day. Because every day is a challenge. But she's committed to these employees. She's committed to this council, she's committed to the citizens of Gochay. She's talented, she could go anywhere in the world and work. Go anywhere in the world and make more money. But she's dedicated to here. And Miss Jancy, I wish you and your husband Jim and all your children and grandchildren a Merry Christmas. I wish all of our city staff, our city attorney, our city judge, all of y'all a Merry Christmas, and we are blessed and thankful for each one of you. But please, on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, let's remember the reason for the season, but let's not forget our public safety. Our public works that will be on duty on emergencies. Our healthcare responders that are working, because without them, we are not safe. So as you all might travel your holiday season, I wish you all a blessed Christmas. And I also wish you safe travels to and back home. I ask you that you continue to pray for our youth as the tragedy still lingers with them, because the holidays won't be easy for those families and our youth. I also wanna thank, um, H two O for your new partnership. We are blessed. I can't tell you how blessed. Um, you save on the phone calls from working with our staff, with Sam, Ramona, Miss Jancy, for getting the word out. Um, it, I cannot even thank you enough, the list goes on. Waste Pro is not here tonight, um, but I thank them, and I feel they need to get recognition. If you didn't see media, and Chief Latch can comment on it, but to fight a fire in any city or in the state, and to have people in the home to be rescued is very rare. To have one save is a miracle, to have two saves is a double miracle. And for those firefighters who fought the fire, that they had help by Waste Pro, that is a Gochay business that services that city. Those guys helped. They helped the public safety, they notified them when they arrived on the scene, and they were there to assist them while they were in there battling that fire. And kudos to those firefighters, kudos to Waste Pro for helping them, kudos to the police department, and we pray for those victims in that fire, and God bless Moss Point during that time. But we have heroes that help other cities that deserve recognition, and I'm here to recognize them and thank them. We're blessed to have them here in Gochay. I also want to remind you that we will be traveling upcoming in January and ask that you keep us and our state delegation and your thoughts and prayers as we travel to and from Jackson during the legislative session and be with them, that they will make great decisions for all of the state of Mississippi. And then also, remember, we are gonna be the home of the Songwriters Hall of Fame Museum, and they continue to support Gochay, we continue to support them, and they have their last performance of the year, um, December the twenty-first at seven P.M., um, Songs and Stories, a live show at the Mary C. in Ocean Springs. So if you want to go support your Mississippi songwriters, um, their last, um, performance for the year will be December twenty-first. New Year's Eve, we have a lot of, as you, um, heard earlier, um, Hickory Hills, um, Golf Club, um, course will have, um, festivities. Also, um, American Legion in the southern part of the city will have festivities, along with some of our other local businesses. But I remind you to be safe and, um, call a friend, call a neighbor if you need to. Um, but be safe in whatever you do. And also thank Hickory Hills Golf Course and the Mississippi Heritage Trust this past weekend. They both held events in the city of Gochay. And Hickory Hills had a neighborhood golf cart parade that was nice and well-attended. Myself and Councilman College attended that, and I was unable to make it to the, um, Heritage Trust down in, um, Sea Cliff. But, um, Walter Anderson parted with, um, partnered at the Old Fields to host a Neighborhood Coco Sunset event down there. And, um, that was very nice of them and the neighbors, um, that were able to attend, joined it. So once again, I wish you all, um, a Merry Christmas, um, you know, well, holiday wishes with reindeer kisses. Uh, and Mr., Wow. One more time, Mr. Coleman.
Yes, I would just like to invite you all to church, uh, so I did church service, we don't, we, uh, we'll be out, I don't think we'll be out by twenty.
Okay.
And we won't take up for one collection.
Okay, and State, State Church that you're inviting everybody to?
Uh, whole community.
Whole community.
Uh, a bunch of jims.
Okay.
Right in that, uh, here.
Well, thank you for your invitation. So once again, um, have a holy, jolly Christmas, Bill, reindeer kisses, along with New Year wishes, and take your holiday photos at the city of Gochay's beautiful landscape and lighting, um, that wishes you a Merry Christmas, thanks to our parking wreck department. Um, we have a motion to adjourn until, oh, Miss Jancy, you have a comment? Mr. Danos, a comment? Do we have a motion to adjourn until January the second at six thirty?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Councilman Jackson?
Aye.
Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Motion carries.